Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, Tuesday, September 9, 2025. And we'll start, call to order. Judy, if you'd do the roll call.
Yes, I can do that so quickly now. Styles.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Osterholm.
Here.
Also present is planning and zoning and, oh my God, I don't have it in front of you. All many things. Meg Leatherman.
Great, thank you. So we'll review the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, additions, anything? If not, then we will move on to the review of the minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, changes to the minutes?
I have a comment about the minutes, because obviously it's not capturing word for word what we said.
Yeah.
You know, it's sort of trying to summarize. And I, maybe this isn't the right place for this, but I feel like, I'd like to say more. I don't think that they really captured what I was saying about the, you know, that we have essentially, you know, a rule that nobody else has with the, you know, having to have the people live on the property or have a representative living on the property. And we track our, you know, our TGLs. And so the things that people don't like, and even the people who are writing in about the TGLs, you know, what they're writing about is TGLs where there's speculation.
Well, we'll stick to the minutes.
Okay.
What would you like to add to the minutes and where would you like to add it?
But I'm getting that that's what you would like to have added, is more of that context that you layered in during the discussion?
Yes. Yeah, because I think that, I mean, we, I mean, most of these letters, in terms, you asked about, so there's.
Yeah, we'll talk about this afterwards.
All right.
I can go back in and flesh that out a little bit, because.
Okay.
I, I mean, I know, I understand what you're saying, because I heard it at the time, and I can, yes.
All right. So I guess because we have something to talk about, we'll talk about this more.
Yes. So Scott, do you have any changes or additions?
No, I don't know.
Okay, so then we're making a move, a motion to approve the minutes with Judy fleshing out some of the comments that Stephen Green made. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I move.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, next we'll move on to communications. We have a whole lot of communications. We originally just had two. Now we have, and I had asked Stephen if he would sort of tally them.
So in terms of the Berman, Mindy, there's one against two, four, and there are one, two, three, four, five against changing the, any kind of loosening of the TGL.
Okay, great. And I did want to comment on, I guess it was one of the letters, maybe it was the one from Purdon, that mentioned that we're a small group making decisions on this. Well, we are a group of five normally, but we're following the code. And the code has been approved by our village council.
I thought they were talking about the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, I thought they were talking about us, that we are.
We don't do anything wrong.
And there are places in the code where we do have some discretion. I think with this, we have tried to pretty much stay on what the code specifies. And just in historical perspective, is that this came up, I don't know, it was when Mary Ann McQueen was still on council, and she was serving on Planning Commission with us. And we, I guess there were a number of people in the community that were concerned about transient guest lodgings in our community with our loss of affordable housing. And so the village council asked Planning Commission to come up with some regulations for the code about it. And that was something that we worked on. There was a public hearing. We probably made changes. We passed it. It went to village council. Village council has one or two public hearings on it, and then they passed it. So we're, our job is to, to go by the code. And so we try not to make up stuff. Hopefully, we are not. So we had a number of communications, so it looks like altogether we had eight. Then moving on to our council and committee reports.
Real quick, because I just wanted to get some clarification, because I am on the Board of Zoning Appeals too.
Yeah, sure.
And when this was, we felt, I mean, that's what we do, you know, that's what the Board of Zoning Appeals does, is like, if you have a grief against an ordinance, that's where you could find relief. So we actually acted, acted properly too.
Following rules.
Yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that real quick.
Right, thank you, thank you. And that is something that we have, that was left in for this, that if you don't like the decision that we make, then you can go to the BZA, and then it's up to them to decide what they're going to do. So, moving on, council and committee reports.
I do have something for active transportation.
Okay.
I've been starting to attend those, and we're going to be submitting for a grant to update the active transportation plan at the end of 2025, so in 2026, we're going to be updating.
Great, thank you. And do we have anything from the council?
We do, which Gavin was, no, we seem to have this here. So he said he's on his way. So at the August 18 meeting, council decided to hold a work session regarding financial incentive options. So August 20, there was a work session focused on tax increment financing and community reinvestment areas. Some of the info was specific to possibilities potentially available to the Windsor projects, which you folks approved this summer, and some was more general and applicable to other kinds of projects. At the September 2 meeting, council authorized the village manager and planning and economic development director, thank you, to proceed with development of a CRA, and those details will then come back to council at a later point. On September 2, council also got an update on the short-street pilot project. The village is continuing to gather feedback. Council will take a vote regarding the future of the project. That isn't hard and fast. That's perhaps late October, early November, late November. I mean, information is still being gathered, so that's not set in stone.
Okay. Great. What you got? Thank you very much, Judy, for that report. We're coming to our, the point in our agenda where we have citizens' comments. These are comments on anything that is not on our agenda. So if you have something you want to comment on that is not on the agenda, so, and I do want to, maybe at this point, maybe the time to do it, is that anybody who is going to be commenting, I need to swear you in. So maybe just everybody ought to be sworn in, just in case you decide you want to pop in and talk. So if you all just stand, I guess, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in matters before this board?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So now you're all sworn in. Okay, and so I am guessing there were no general citizens' comments.
Wait, I don't know.
If you will come up and use a mic, and if you'll tell us your name.
I want to know if it's, right now is the right time, because I was, if it's on the agenda, you guys are talking about.
Okay, then you wait if it's on the agenda.
Airbnb stuff on the agenda.
Yes.
Oh, cool, okay, I'll wait.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, then we will start with our first public hearing, which is the conditional use for Jennifer Berman. Property owner has submitted a conditional use application for transient guest lodging at 309 West Whitman. Meg?
All right, thank you, yes. Meg Leatherman. And Gavin has joined the meeting. This is a conditional use application submitted by Jennifer Berman and Matt Mindy, the property owners, at 309 West Whitman Street. The property is zoned RV or medium-density residential. In this instance, the Planning Commission is the final decision-maker for this application. And just some housekeeping that I always do, adjoining property owners will mail the notice on August 22, 2025. Signs were posted on the property on August 29, and a notice was published in the paper August 29 as well. Staff report was prepared that outlines the applicable village code, which was provided to the Planning Commission and posted on our website for the public on September 5. So this is a proposal to operate a transient guest lodging in an existing dwelling. There's no new construction proposed as part of this application. The owners of the property remain in the primary dwelling that's at the front of the property, and they have an existing second dwelling unit on their rear of the property that would be for the short-term rental. There are several TGLs existing in the vicinity, and I have a map of it, just so you have an image. The blue is their property. There is one within 128 feet, that's the closest one. However, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a variance on June 4, with authorizes this TGL to be within 500 feet of another one. Also, in the staff report, I didn't, wasn't really clear on the smoking. The applicant has says that they're not going to allow smoking on the property as much as they can control that, but it's going to be advertised that it's not allowed. And then just that the proposal complies with the conditional use standards, and I recommend approval with the four conditions in the staff report. And the applicant has requested to make a comment as well.
Okay. I have a, just a general question. Since this came before us, we turned it down, they went to the BZA, and they gave them a variance. So is that, did they come, they didn't come before us? This is the first time. Okay, they haven't come before us. All right. So they went to BZA.
They went, I had them go there first, because I figured if they couldn't, wouldn't get that exception, then they didn't need to do the conditional use.
Okay, so we have the option of deciding yes or no?
Yeah, you do, based on more of the conditional use standards, which are more compatibility with the area, not necessarily, you can't necessarily say no based on the distance, the fact that there's one within 500 feet of it, because that had been buried.
You can say a variance on that.
But you could say no for other reasons.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Meg before we have the owner come and talk?
I would like to know what the, how that, the BZA thing works with that. Since you said you were on that, I'm just, I'm just curious what that deliberation was like and what gets considered within that.
Well, one of the, one of the main things is that we have longtime residents, contributors to the community, that are trying to stay here. And for lack of better words, that's kind of like a golden ticket, the way the Planning Commission changed the rules, that, that one of the things that we look at as far as we're doing TGLs. And they hit that kind of criteria, Russ members, that we allowed that.
Okay.
Keep some, keep some people here that have been here a while.
So other than long-term residency, what, are there other things that get considered?
Yeah, we hashed that out and talked about it, and this is the way they wanted to go, and that's what they applied for, and we just went ahead and approved.
And so in part, it is based on that they felt that they needed the additional income to stay in town.
Yes, and I even asked them about, yeah, I even asked them about the parking.
Okay.
And I was told that they satisfied the parking requirements that would be required for a TGL, and where they were going to put it.
Okay.
I think also, because I was there, it had to do with also that the one, even though it was within 128 feet, it was on a completely different street, and it felt like a completely different neighborhood versus Whitman, which is almost like a separate community area.
What is the other street that the other?
Davis.
Davis.
So when we applied, if we were to apply the 500-foot walking rule, do we use alleys or do we have to stay to paved streets?
I put, well, in the proposal language, we, which isn't finalized, so maybe we should forget, I did put along, along the right-of-way from the closest front property line to the closest front property line.
Okay.
So I don't think we could use the alley.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, any other comments than, than if Mindy is here and would like to talk?
I'm Jennifer.
Or Jen, I'm sorry. I don't even know where I came up with.
It's a common, common mistake.
That happens all the time.
So you all read the letter opposed to our particular application, so I just wanted to address some points in there. And I think that while I'm doing that, I'll make all the points I wanted to make anyway. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you regarding our application for transient guest lodging at our home. I would like to correct some points made in our new neighbors' letter opposing our application. I believe this will also cover the content of a general appeal to you, so I will leave it at this and welcome any follow-up questions or clarifications. The letter quotes the zoning resolution regarding the 500-feet rule. The reason for the variance process is precisely because our zoning commission understands that no one rule fits every circumstance. The zoning commission considered my argument, and one of the board members, who actually drafted the 500-foot rule, stated that the rule was never intended to harm long-term villagers who live adjacent to their TGL unit and are trying to figure out how to stay in town. And then they made a point about zoning. We deal with local zoning guidelines, not national ones nor Green County ones. And again, the reason the zoning planners created a variance process is precisely to hear why one resident's situation might be worthy of an exception to the zoning laws. If, as the letter asserts, there is a perception of bias toward long-term residents who are trying to figure out how to stay in the community they raised their kids in, I think that aligns exactly with the values of our community. We are compassionate village, but bias or no, I'm not sure how that has anything to do with my request. Contradiction of zoning laws. This is a false argument couched in concerns about taking a long-term rental off the market. It's interesting that the letter writer both objects to perceived bias supporting, quote, "long-term residents or people who aren't wealthy," while voicing concern about taking a long-term rental off the market. To me, this seems disingenuous. Management concerns. We are quite capable of managing our short-term guests. The difficulty we had with tenants was related to pets, which only affected the indoor space and posed no risk to the neighbors. I will also note that in the entire time we have had tenants, which is 12 years, we have not received a single noise or other type of complaint, clearly indicating that we are able to manage the property in a manner that respects our neighbors. The only pets allowed into our TGL will be service animals. Street and safety parking. The number of cars in our driveway is generally two at most, not three. My husband and I share one car, and our daughter, who works in Xenia when home on break, has a car, but she is usually in college in North Carolina. There is no third car, though there is room in our property for four cars in front, two side-by-side, and one perpendicular, and one in back behind the TGL apartment. There is clearly sufficient parking, and it will not create a traffic situation on our cul-de-sac and impede their children's ability to navigate Whitman Street. Regarding the issue in early July, a quick call to us would have alerted us to the issue, and I would have immediately checked on Zach and encouraged him to come inside as we had plenty of room. The young man had driven to our house late at night and didn't want to impose. He was the saxophone player for our son's band, and he was coming in from Canton. He had the AC going for about an hour, because it was getting to be a hot day as the sun beat down. There is no law, as far as I know, of having someone stay in a car with the engine running for an hour. He was on the street for about an hour, and then he went to run an errand, and when he returned, he parked on our driveway. He was certainly not blocking traffic. It was also the 4th of July weekend on his cul-de-sac, so traffic on our street is minimal, even on a weekday. In conclusion, our new neighbors are unfortunately not adequately informed about their assertions, and unfortunately did not reach out to us to discuss their concerns. In my experience, that's the first step when one has a conflict with a reasonable person. I could have avoided this long exposition had they just shared their concerns with us one-on-one. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So it had been a long-term rental?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, and you said you didn't have any trouble with that, but you're, but it's more economically better to do the short term?
And also, when our kids come into town, we want them to have a place to stay. If I, if I get a book contract, I would love to move into that place and have it be my studio, which was our plan all along, so I wouldn't have to, you know, evict a tenant on short notice. And the reason I talked about the cats in the apartment was that they were asserting that there was property damage and that we wouldn't know how to manage TGL tenants. And so I just wanted to point out that there was no property damage outside the building. There were no broken windows, no barroom fights. It was just a question of the cats going a little crazy inside.
Okay.
I have a question of, so the transient guest lodging or the apartment, where is it in relation to your house? Is it the upstairs or?
There is a little apartment that's on the alley.
Okay.
And then there is our garage, and then our house.
Okay, so it's in the little apartment?
Right.
So it is separate, so it has?
Right.
Okay, because I was looking at, okay, so the, yeah, the floor plan that you have submitted then must be for the little house.
That's right.
Okay. For some reason, I thought that was your house.
Sorry, yeah.
And I was trying to figure out how it all fit together.
It has a loft, so that explains the stairs.
So it is separate?
Right.
Anyone have other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then this is the time when we will pass our public hearing. Anybody who would like to come up and speak for or against, or whatever, come up, say your name and where you live, and then you have, what is it, two minutes to speak? And so the public hearing is open. Anybody want to come and talk about this particular one? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. Any discussion among the committee?
So I'm going to just beat my drum a little bit about this, because this is, you know, we talk about, people, the people who wrote all the letters are talking about TGLs sort of in general, you know, they're, okay, and they do definitely have the potential, you know, if people were coming into the village, buying houses, and then renting them out short-term, it definitely would take away, you know, the kind of long-term rental, and this is a case where a long-term rental is becoming a TGL. But it's also, the things that, the benefits of this are, you know, that it was, I mean, we originally talked about this because we wanted the people who live in the village to be able to earn some extra income. It's, it's limited, you know, you only have so much, you know, so many TGLs you can get onto your property, and then it also brings people into, so they can go downtown and they can spend their money, and, and then the village also collects taxes on it. So there's definitely, you know, none of the letters talk about any of the benefits. They talked about.
So are you in support of this, or?
I'm in support of it.
Okay.
And I'm, you know, yes.
Okay.
I think that this is doing exactly what the TGLs are supposed to do. It's providing an extra income source for people who are in the village, you know, and so this is showing it working.
Any other comments? Gavin?
Well, first of all, sorry I was late.
That's okay.
It's my daughter's birthday, and things got a little hectic, and I lost track of time for a second. Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think this is sort of exactly the kind of example that's interesting to think about from a sort of policy standpoint. I understand the, your perspective of, like, the idea of how do you decide what is a long-term resident, or how do you decide what is a hardship financially, like, where would an economic line be? But I guess also, I don't, I work at the Co-Active office that's right around the corner, and I don't, like, it does feel like they're kind of like different neighborhood, like the one that's on Davis. I don't know, I guess I just, I haven't heard that much. I have a little bit of a hard time understanding, like, what, what's, what is going to be the problem? Like, it just, it doesn't feel like there's a, I haven't heard any, any concerns about the functional dynamics on a day-to-day basis. So anyway, I don't know, I guess, I would like, I like the idea of having consistency, like, I would like to be able to have, here are the rules, and then not select it on a case-by-case basis. But I also, I think that's what we're trying to figure out, is what these lines are. And, I don't know, I think I'm generally open to it. Anyway, those are some thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I would like for us to follow what the code is, but I also understand that the variance, the BZA, that's the purpose of it, that if somebody wants a variance, then that's the process that they do. I am a little concerned about a neighbor not wanting it, and I'm hoping perhaps things can be worked out with that. You have other neighbors, at least one or two, who support it, but I am concerned about the one who doesn't like it. But in general, I feel like with the BZA approving the variance, and I feel like that I'm also open to approving it.
So, and this may be, I may be misunderstanding, but the variance simply allows Planning Commission to hear, right?
Yes.
So that there's no pressure?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand that.
But I heard it right. Meg, you were saying we can't vote against it because of the 500-foot rule?
That's correct.
Because that part has been sort of like decided by the appropriate body that isn't us?
Yeah.
So then you're just considering it like everything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so what then, what are the criteria? If it would be somehow disruptive to the neighborhood?
The neighbors are certainly, I mean, that's why we have a hearing and why we asked for comments, and it's posted, so that if there are neighbors that are, you know, we take that into consideration.
Yeah, I mean, there's about proposed compatibility with the character of the general vicinity is one of the standards. It has essential services. If we don't think it has essential services, which I've checked with the finance department, and they're all up to date on their utility bills, and, and, like, if we think that there's uses or activities or processes or materials or equipment that would impede the general welfare of the public, it's kind of...
Transient guest-led, transient guest meth lab, that would be a...
Right, yeah, we can't do that. Yeah, so, you know...
You don't do that in the business district.
I guess if we thought, if we thought the lights were going to be, you know, we could say, you have to make sure your lights are facing downward, that's part of our code, but we wanted to be a little bit more strict about the lighting, you could add a condition about lighting, or, I don't know about...
Okay.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this with the conditions stated.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'll let Judy do roll call.
All right. Devoe Leonard?
Yes.
Ostrholm?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, thank you.
Yeah. I'll send you a written-up approval.
Great. Thanks so much.
Okay, then, that was our first one. And so then we're moving on to our text amendments, and I guess we'll take them one at a time?
Yes, they read my mind.
Great. So Meg, the first one we have is off-street parking and loading, is that correct? Bicycle parking.
Okay. Bicycle parking. So in applying the code, because just in 2024, as you remember, we adopted basically a whole requirement in, similar to vehicular parking in that table, where we said you needed to provide so many bicycle spaces when you did new development, specifically conditional uses. And then with applying it, the way that it got written up, mainly is driven by Gary, and he's not here, and he passed along his thoughts, so I'm just passing it along. And I agree with it, it makes sense. We're just clarifying it so people know exactly how many bicycle parking spaces are required to be installed, where the way it was worded, it was kind of unclear, it was almost like double the amount that he thought that actually was needed for each use category.
Gary thought there was too much bike parking?
Yes, he did. He thought there was too much bike parking. So it's really, it's almost like a cleanup error.
That's why he's not here.
Yes.
He didn't want him to be at public.
Yeah, and then I did add an example of one, and he wanted me to, which is in here, and I support it, I don't have any problem with it, an example of one, because as you might remember, like, the planning commission can waive the bicycle parking, and it just states, for instances of good cause. He just wanted to elaborate and add an example of what a good cause would be, like, for example, if you have bicycle parking available inside the primary dwelling or accessory dwelling, then you don't need to have a separate one outside, but you'd have to, like, show that, and then the commission could just waive it instead of requiring it.
So explain, so now I'm seeing where the red is here, the...
Yeah, red is...
So going from half car requirement to one-fourth the car requirement, because we are saying that you can get two bicycles on one bike rack?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this is kind of, I mean, when you apply, when you do code amendments, then you actually put it into use, these, it's typical for these things to kind of pop up to you more after you start using it in reality, in real time, so this is kind of one of those things.
Okay, so we went from bicycle parking spaces to bicycle racks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that makes total sense. All right.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else we...
No, that one is pretty, that was an easy one to start with.
And we need to have a public hearing on this, right? So we're going to open a public hearing on the bicycle parking. Would anybody like to come forward and speak? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. And so our motion is to approve the changes, the text amendment.
It's to recommend...
To the council.
The changes, yes, to council.
Okay. Well, I move that we recommend changing the bicycle parking as it is laid out by Meg.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll just say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. Then our next one to talk about is, and this one has to do with the transient guest lodging, to modify the measurement for the distance between the location of transient guest lodging units, to be based on distance along the right-of-way. Yes.
So at the last planning commission meeting, we went over some research that Gary did, where he reached out to a couple of different jurisdictions in the area to see how their code regulated short-term rentals. And since then, he also reached out to a couple more, and all that information was in the packet today, just showing whether or not they had the same zoning codes that we had going back. This was a goal for the planning commission, to look into this a little bit more for 2025, so that's why we're even having this conversation. But he added to his research, and he added his own notes in there. I'm going to take a look at them, but I think overall, we voted at the last meeting, the planning commission decided to bring back a text amendment that basically just stated that the way we measure the distance between transit guest lodging units would be different, because the code right now is really specific, and it says that you have to measure it from the closest property line to closest property line, where now we're going to say that be measured along the right-of-way from, and from the front property line to the closest front property line, if there was another one. So it's easiest to wrap your head around these kind of things, I think, when you look at an example, luckily, we just had one before us, Jennifer Burman's, where, when, the way I strictly read the code, the way I measured it, was from the rear property line to rear property line in that instance, so it was 128 feet away, but if you go out on the street frontage from the front around the street, then it's longer, it's, so it would meet the 500 rule.
It would have met the 500 rule.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
So that's what, that's what, how this would be effectuated, I guess, if you wanted to understand the change and how it would change the situation. So anyways, here we are, I have the draft language, that's the only change in that section, and wanted to make sure you guys thought that I heard you correctly and created an amendment that was what you directed me to do.
Okay.
So I think this is the time where I'm, so I, after we had the conversation the last time, I checked in with the solicitor, our village attorney, to check in about, since we have an Airbnb in my house, since we're voting on the policy, I had checked with her previously about doing the individual ones, like the one we just had, and the solicitor's advice is that it's okay to do the individual ones, but that when we're voting about the policy at large, that I should...
Recuse yourself.
So...
And that is also when Mary Ann was serving on this committee.
Same thing happened.
That she recused herself when we talked about it. Okay, so, any questions for Meg at this point?
So is it, based on this thing that Gary put together, where it says full-house TGL allowed, is that, that's where it says, so Yellow Springs is no some grandfathered, and everybody else is yes? So that would mean that, that would mean that somebody could buy every house on the block and turn them all into TGLs? They could totally, they could decimate a neighborhood, but in Yellow Springs, you couldn't do that?
That's correct.
You have to, you have to live on the property or have a representative living on the property.
Just looking at that one standard, yes.
Okay.
They have other, but yeah.
Okay, and that's the, that's the thing that's like unique and different about the way we're doing this than everybody else is?
That's one thing, yeah.
And then, so like, and then also this 500-foot thing, so once you're, you know, if we're having a distance location between two, two TGLs, you know, so the Board of Zoning Appeals doesn't have to approve it, they could say no, and then you would be, you wouldn't be able to do it because you're within 500 feet either however we do it. So we're basically giving a little, sort of a mini monopoly to somebody. They get there first, and then that, they got, you know, nobody else, potentially. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's...
And you brought that up the last time, yes.
Okay, well, I'm just still beating my dead horse.
You are.
It's dead.
You know? It's...
That's right.
There are people, I mean, I've just, I've already been involved in two, where, you know, someone's going to move, they call us first and say they're going to move, and what do we do? Because it doesn't transfer when you sell property either.
Right.
So, and, and sometimes it's marketable to advertise that you have one, but you can't do that because you have to reapply, the new owner has to reapply.
And there's no legal implications of us giving out mini monopolies, like...
Well, our attorney...
Be sued by somebody saying, oh, hey, look...
We can be sued by anyone for anything, it's just a matter of the risks that are willing to take. And I think our attorney was comfortable with the way we've established it because it's measurable, it's clear and measurable. But whether or not we would, like, for sure win in court, it depends on a lot of different things.
Okay, but we never have like a situation where we, we put them all out to bid, we see, you know, who wants to pay the most for their ability to have a TGL? We just, we give this away, and then...
Well, it's, we are not giving it away. People are applying, and they apply when the time is right for their situation. And you'll look at the way the numbers have been, in fact, 2021 is when I was really concerned, I was thinking we needed to have a maximum number of them in the community. There were 53. We've now dropped down to 39. Do we know why that we've dropped down?
Not sure.
But, you know, I kind of like that number better. I'm one that I'm really concerned about neighborhoods having too many of them.
So what do you, I mean, just, maybe we're taking too much time on this, but what are you, what are you, what is, what's the, what is too many, and what's the implication of having too many?
I think too many is when you have them more, I like our current regulations, that the 500 feet. I am open to this one, measuring it, because I think it's probably easier, and the comment from Gary was that he thought by measuring it along the road, it would, somebody like this last one that had to go and get a variance, they would have, it would have been approved by the 500 feet, and it's in a different neighborhood. And so I think that that's okay. I mean, I'm more open to that.
Okay, so, I mean, do, okay, let me just play devil's advocate with this thing. So there are probably, do you know where the TGLs are in your neighborhood?
I think my neighborhood doesn't have any. I have apartments, I have a number of apartments.
But, but do you know for sure? I mean, because this is, I think that people are worried about, like, they don't, I mean, we've had this before, we don't, people didn't like strangers, they didn't like people smoking by their cars, they, I mean, we've talked about this lots of different things, and I can see why people have concerns about it, but, you know, but the property owners live in right there, so you're not going to have a, you know, a bachelor party, you're not going to have somebody wild and crazy, you're going to have people coming to the village. And so, you know, if, I think it's nice, you know, it's, this was a perfect example of the good side of the TGLs, is that people who, you know, it helps them stay, it helps them live here, and gets, you know, and people want to come to Yellow Springs. So, you know, I don't know that the, like, this 500 thing is getting us a whole lot. I think it's...
Okay, right now, this is what we are discussing and voting on. That was the only change that this commission decided that we wanted to make.
Absolutely right.
And so this is what we're talking about.
I'm beating a dead horse, so I can shut up now.
Scott, do you have any comments about it?
Other than the fact that, from the feedback I've heard, and given it some more thought, and there is a process that people can go to if they don't meet the guidelines with the BCA, I'm not inclined to change it at all, leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is? Well, you know, I'm...
Because of the round-the-corner thing, you know, it's like, well, you know what? That does make sense, because by the road, yeah, they're 500 feet apart, but now you're like 100, the last one, they're 128 feet apart.
Yeah.
And, but like I said, those people had a process to go through, where they came and explained it a lot better at the BCA meeting than here.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, we got to hear the whole story behind it. So, as I said, I'm encouraged to just leave it the way it is, and, because there is a process to find if they think it's wrong, you know, to apply, and like these people did.
Well, of the letters that were written, there are five of them that were, are against us making any change to the rules, so...
Yeah, that's all the letters, but there's a...
One that is...
Phone calls and Facebook.
Okay, then, why don't we go ahead and open it up to public comment? Is there anybody who would like to come forward? If you'll tell us your name and make your comments? Thank you.
Johnny Dred, John Search. I've lived here for 16, 17 years now, was a renter a while back. Oh, goodness.
It's not a shock.
I was a renter, I was a renter, and now I'm a homeowner. I have been following this discussion for a long time, and believe it or not, I think there's been kind of, since maybe COVID, a feeling of restricting Airbnbs or TGLs rather than regulating them. I'm neither for or against Airbnbs, but I am for regulating them in a way that makes sense for everybody, including our downtown businesses that probably rely on overnight businesses, or overnight guests, who spend, on average, three times more than an average person would. And Gary's report, I think it was very well done. I think there was something under-reported in that, and that was the places that he compared Yellow Springs to, places like Beaver Creek and some of these other places had a bevy of hotel stock for overnight accommodations. He said Beaver Creek, for example, had 10 Airbnbs, but they had 200 hotel rooms. I would, I would almost say that we are underserving our tourism industry by not having enough overnight accommodations. That being said, I'm saying that I've got some suggestions, I think, for how we can better regulate this to better serve everybody. I know I don't have a lot of time, so I printed it out in full points, if you'd like to receive them, and then I can run down them real quick. I think I've got six there. So, that being said, I think we should just have one permit for all TGLs, whether they're unoccupied or nonoccupied. And with that being, the regulations, I think there's some smart things we could do, safety and compliance, being an annual life safety inspection, to include that if you do get approved for this permit, that you would have to annually be inspected by the fire department for those emergency situations. I think that we should have 24/7 local contact person available. This would keep it from being an out-of-state owner, somebody who lives in who knows where and just checks in if something were to go wrong. We need to have somebody that they can say is local and available within 30 minutes to be a point of contact.
And with that timer, that your time is up?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts there.
Yes, we will look at those. Anyone else have any comments? If you'll tell us your name, and two minutes.
Sure. Hi, I'm Kellyanne Tracy. I have been doing some research on rental properties. I went to a affordable housing meeting with Home, Inc., and 365, and I asked the question, how many rentals do we have in Yellow Springs? Nobody knows. I started doing some research, went into the Bowman study that they had. The Bowman study didn't know how many rentals that we had. The Bowman study only, as far as accessory dwelling units, only counted eight, because only eight people had asked for any kind of permission to do those dwellings. And they also only counted multifamily rental properties as well, not single individual homes. So we truly do not have an idea of how many rentals that we have, so I don't understand how we can make decisions on how many rentals that we need. So in my research, what I also found out was, in the last 18 months, 20 rentals have been sold and taken off of the market and not returned as rentals. Many of those are sitting vacant. We have no idea what the individual who purchased them for, what their reasoning is for, all we know is currently, right now, they're not rentals. In my case, my landlord passed away on March 8th. He had 16 properties that he has for rentals. Of those 16 people, numerous have been in their, those specific homes for over 20 years, one of them for 30 years. He, thank God, he gave us the opportunity for, in his will, that we all have a year that we can find new homes. It's been six months, two have found new homes. There's still now 14 of us that are going to have to find new homes by March. In addition to that, we also have another complex that has 24 rentals in it that is in jeopardy. It's unsure what's going to happen with that property. By, by increasing the number... By increasing the numbers of short-term rentals, you're literally putting gas on this fire that is what's happening with the rentals here in Yellow Springs.
Thank you. Okay, any other, anyone else wants to speak? And Sam, you were not sworn in, so I'm going to quickly swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth of matters before this board?
I do.
Great, now if you'll introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is Sam Eckenrode. I grew up in Yellow Springs. I've lived here many years, and I just wanted to make a housing-related comment. And that is that a lot of people are unaware how very few domiciles we actually have, period, in this town. I've been quoting somewhere between 1,600 and 1,700 per the most recent census. And even as we add more domiciles, we have to remember, our absolute numbers are so very low that it's very difficult to compare statistics from our teeny-tiny community to a much bigger community. And that happens all the time, because most of the communities that surround us are much bigger. So if we really, if we truly only have, let's just say, 1,700 domiciles, that's not very many. And that counts all the rooms for rent, all the apartments for rent, all the condos and the low-end, mid-range, high-end luxury forms of housing. I just think it's important, for example, if you say we did have 53, now we only have 39. But if you're looking at those as percentages of a total of 1,700 possible places to live, it's no wonder that people who love Yellow Springs often feel like they're being pushed out of Yellow Springs for some reason. We just don't have that much to work with. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And that was perfect timing. The bell went off. Any other discussion at this point? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I, I'll make a motion to amend the, oh, where is it in there? What are we calling this? The TGL to change to, TGL requirements.
To modify the section. Method of measurement.
TGL 16, or 1262.
Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can vote on it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. I think maybe Judy, we need to have roll call.
All right, and we can do that. So just to make clear, your motion is to recommend modification of Section 1262 regarding measurement of TGL distance to council.
Yes.
Scott, you've seconded, and?
Yes.
Osterholm?
No.
Stiles?
No.
So that did not pass. So, want to explain that, what happens next?
So it still goes to council, but we'll provide that recommendation to the, that it was. To the line vote.
Yeah. And you, and you might also, do you provide the letters that we get or the information?
Yeah, those have to get, they're provided with the inter, they can, they have access to the packet, of course, but, yeah, great.
Okay, then our next amendment is, we have one crossed out. And our next one is to amend the chapter on new definitions for deck, floodplan administrator, low attached deck, and clarify accessory dwelling unit can be attached or detached.
Yeah, so these are just some definitions that will be helpful to have in the zoning code. And clarifying, right now, the accessory dwelling unit is not clear, directly clear, because our definition of accessory structure states that all accessory structures are detached, but then in the conditional use, accessory dwelling unit is, can be either. And so I just wanted to clarify in the definition of accessory dwelling unit, that way if someone just saw accessory structure, they wouldn't think that they couldn't do accessory dwelling unit. And then the floodplain administrator is just basically giving, stating that it's whoever, it's the village manager, whoever they appoint. And then the same, we get the question a lot about decks and what's allowed or not. So you'll see that also in the site plan review updates. I'm clarifying when permits are required for decks. And then the reason I put low attached deck was, in the future, when we go into some other sections to amend, I'm planning on allowing low attached decks or proposing to allow low attached decks to be closer to the property lines. Basically, there's some cleanup work. And I did also want to point out that the one that's stricken from the public hearing list, the sewers and sewage, that was the one I mentioned where we're talking about requiring installation of a backflow preventer. We're still moving that forward. It's going to go to council directly. It's not in the zoning code, so it's just not under the purview of the Planning Commission. So it's still moving forward.
Does anyone have any questions for Meg about this, about the deck, floodplain administrator, low attached deck, or the accessory dwelling unit can be attached or detached?
No.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and open our public hearing. Public hearing for anybody who would like to talk about this text amendment. And if not, then we will close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add the new definitions.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. Then, let's see, we have one more text amendment. To amend the site plan review and exemptions to include additions to any existing single-family dwelling attached deck and fences.
Yeah, so this site plan review section is really specific to when we require a site plan application. And I'm not sure if you remember, but the site plan application is the one that has like a really detailed list of everything that could potentially be possible to be on some type of plan that you're reviewing. So everything from the name of the engineer, landscaping, lighting, civil drawings for sewer and water. It, and it's almost like a little bit of a higher level of review. I would say it can be staff level or Planning Commission level, but we also have a set of requirements in the zoning permit section, which is a general zoning permit requirement. So these things like, in addition to an existing single-family dwelling, a fence and attached deck, we'll still have to submit a zoning application to our office. It's just a different application form. And so I was just clarifying that, because it almost seems like reading this that we needed both. And we don't want people to think they have to do both, I don't, I don't think, because that's just a little bit too much for a fence or, or an existing single-family addition. So the addition, the existing single-family addition is, would be submitted, what's called a new construction zoning permit. A fence has its own fence permit, and the decks would be, attached deck would be, it's, we're going to create a new one for decks, because our definition of accessory structure is detached. Everything detached. So it can't be an accessory structure, so we're going to make our own form for decks.
Okay.
And I, I get that question a lot from people, and they don't know which application to submit. And so I'm hoping clarifying it a little bit in here for anyone who wants to read, it's clear for them what's required.
Okay, any other questions for Meg?
I did also strike two other statements out in the purpose statement, and that was kind of at the advice of our solicitor. And I mentioned, sorry, I meant to mention, for all of these, the solicitor has reviewed and approved them as well. Like, to prevent depreciation of land values, we're striking just because that's really, it's in the purpose statement, but that's really something that's kind of out of our purview. We don't have complete control out of, for all those factors. So we're striking that. And then the one, in the opinion, like, the exception where the zoning administrator can move a Level A review to a Level B review, the Level B comes to Planning Commission, we're striking where it says if the planning commission, the zoning administrator identifies that there's a negative impact on surrounding properties, just to be more broad, like, just leave it open, that I can move it to a Type 2 at my discretion. Because negative impact on surrounding properties is, I don't know, that's hard, to me, that's hard to justify or prove or bring forward, like, directly, like, I'd rather just be able to say, yes, this is, whatever specific reason, I think it needs to come to Planning Commission. I tell them the specific reason versus having to prove that it's a negative impact on surrounding properties.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Meg with those clarifications? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Oh, do we, do you need that public hearing?
We had the public hearing. Oh, no, we didn't. I'm sorry.
No, it feels like it.
Okay, we will open the public hearing for anybody who would like to comment on this. Nobody wants to comment.
I was looking.
Okay, we will close the public hearing.
Are you talking about a gong? That would be a good way to, like, open a, people would know.
Be really Yellow Springs-y. I think we should.
Yes. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion for a gong. I'll make, I'll make a motion to make the modifications that we just talked about.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Then we're moving on to old business. We don't have any. I don't think we have new business. Agenda planning, I guess, is in this for, oh, yeah, next month.
So I did start working on some other code amendments, one for subdivision regulations. Mainly what the main intent was, to remove the paper copy requirement, but also to make the minor subdivision and replat sections a little bit easier to understand, like, follow the actual process that we require now. But there's a bunch of state law about subdivision regulations, and so Amy needs a little bit more time to review the state law, to make sure that I'm not stepping into anything that's not legal at the state level. And then the general provisions section, this will be a lot more cleanup stuff, similar to like the site plan one, except for the new addition of the traffic study. And I almost, we almost had it on tonight, but then I didn't get Choice One's feedback until the same day this was due. So I got their feedback now, and so it'll be ready the next time. And I still am hoping to send it out a little bit earlier, because I think this traffic study one and that whole Section 1260, it's going to be a lot of changes.
And the traffic study, as I remember, was that the village would select, who would do the traffic study, but the person proposing would have to pay for it. Is that correct?
Well, I guess that's up to discussion. What I'm, what I'm creating is an actual detailed, like, layout on most of what they need to submit in their traffic study.
Okay, the things that we want to include.
And I've modeled it so far out of Green County and Xenia, but I changed the threshold to be more accommodating to village, what we're used to in the village.
All right.
Because I know we had discussion of that we would prefer that the village find the consultant to do the study, rather than like somebody, a developer, because they're probably gonna, since they're paying, probably they would get the results they wanted. And we thought it would be more.
That was, I think, specific to the Windsor project, but, which they haven't done that yet. These are just general standards, but I see what you're saying. I think that's harder to definitely, like, clearly regulate upfront, just you have to hire someone. We have to go to some kind of reimbursement agreement, I guess, on how we get paid and they would get paid. This is going to clearly state what's required, even for like off-site improvements. I've added where they have to join to nearby sidewalks or trails and pathways. They have to connect to those within a certain radius.
Okay.
Yeah, I, so they would still hire their own, but we would then have our traffic engineers review it to make sure they weren't trying to pull anything over on us.
Okay, okay. And do we have any other things that possibly are going to be coming to our meeting? Anything from Windsor?
Not yet. They're still moving forward. From what I've heard, that they're going to be in the next month or two, coming with their final development application.
But we don't have the traffic study yet?
Yes. We'll have to have that.
You and I had talked about this thing with PUDs, trying to, like.
You were going to rewrite the whole thing for us and bring it back. The office is going to ask, is that done?
It's getting to the top of the list. No, I just, I'll get, I'll send you an email, and you can tell me what sections.
Okay.
Or what documents apply to this thing, because I don't, I don't keep any of this stuff.
Okay. Are, do you, is the link good? Do you go on to?
Yeah, link is fine, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm interested in this, this, you know.
Good, you're good.
Because it's a crazy, you know, way that we do this. We should make it simple to understand.
That's what I'm trying to do, yeah, simple to understand.
Are we almost done?
Okay.
I got a softball game to go coach.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
Yeah.